Good evening and thank you for joining us tonight at our City Council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Ann, could you please call the roll?
Adamson.
Here.
Frey.
Here.
Cheatham.
Here.
Johnston.
Here.
Lorick.
Here.
Blatt.
Here. Thank you if you'd please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance after which if you'll remain standing for the invocation which will be offered by Tony Seiko from the Portnoy Sanger.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In the wake of the tragedy in Florida, I would paraphrase the words of the Buddha, hatred only creates more hatred; the antidote for hatred is love. In that spirit, I would like to read the vow of the Bodhisattva from Shantideva. May I become at all times, both now and forever, a protector for those without protection, a guide for those who have lost their way, a ship for those with oceans to cross, a bridge for those with rivers to cross, a sanctuary for those in danger, a lamp for those without light, a place of refuge for those who lack shelter, and a servant to all in need. Mayor Blatt and members of the City Council, thank you for your generous gift of service to the people of Pocatello.
We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Three is a Consent Agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A. Minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from Saturday, from the study session of January 11, 2018, and January 18, 2018. Study sessions clarification, working lunch, and January 18, 2018, Agenda Clarification Meeting, January 18, 2018, regular council meeting, council liaison working lunch of February 1, 2018, and special city council meeting, fire union quarterly update meeting of February 1, 2018. B. Treasurer's Report. Council may wish to consider the Treasurer's Report for January showing cash and investments as of January 31, 2018. Good evening, Joyce.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. Joyce Stroshine, Chief Financial Officer for the City. Tonight I'm presenting the Treasurer's Report for the month of January 2018. Total cash and cash equivalents represent 91 percent of City's monies totaling $48,315,91. Total long-term investments represent 9 percent of City's monies at $4,677,718 for a total cash, cash equivalents, and long-term investments of $52,992,810. This amount is up $15,180,470 for the month of January. On page two of the report, I've highlighted some key receipts for the month. Airport grant, $36,267. Transit grant, State of Idaho, $43,997. Cable franchise fees, $54,557. This amount is down 10.49 percent from the prior year. Franchise fee, Idaho Power, $105,461. This amount is up 5.25 percent from the prior year. Idaho liquor tax, $133,347. This amount is up 6.7 percent from the prior year. Transit grant federal, $156,473. Idaho sales tax, revenue sharing, $567,275. This amount is up 4.98 percent from the prior year. Idaho state highway user fees, $639,037. This amount is up 1.72 percent from the prior year. Bennett County tax, $15,797,320. The remaining section details the net change in cash and long-term investments for the City. Page three of the report is on our trust funds. Total cash and cash equivalents for the trust funds are $1131,561. Total long-term investments, $4394,964 for a total cash, cash equivalents, and long-term investments of $5526,526. Total cash receipts for the month, $52,957. Total cash disbursements, $54,834. Net change in long-term investments, a decrease of $73,226 for an overall decrease of $75,103 for the month. Page four of the report is a list of all funds' cash balances with a net change for the month. At the end of the month, the general fund increased its net cash by $10,621,377 for an ending balance of $14,463,724. Page five of the report is discussion and analysis for year review. And then page six of the report is the five-year trend of cash balances. This report continues to reflect a very strong cash position for the City. We have two funds, Transit Urban and the CDVG entitlement fund, that have negative balances. These are covered by grants, as these are reimbursement-type grants, so you have to expend and then be reimbursed for the dollars. So this is a very good report for the end of January. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Council, any questions for Joyce? Thank you, Joyce.
Thank you.
Move on to Agenda C, Animal Shelter Advisory Board Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the Mayor's appointment of Cheryl Lucley to serve as the Bennett Humane Society representative on the Animal Shelter Advisory Board, replacing Eileen Jackson, whose term expired. Ms. Lucley's term will begin February 16, 2018, and will expire February 16, 2020. D. Council Decision, Annexation of Land East of Juniper Reserve, Division One. Council may wish to adopt its decision to approve the annexation of a parcel of land comprised of approximately 13.91 acres owned by Juniper Land Corporation. The parcel is located east of Juniper Reserve, Division One, and south of Partridge Ridge Subdivision, Fifth Division, and will be zoned residential low-density RL. E. Council Decision, amended City Council Decision for Mountain West Subdivision, Division One. Council may wish to adopt its decision amending the final plat for Mountain West Subdivision, Division One, subdividing the approximately 9.889 acres of land from 93 lots to 28 lots, 24 buildable lots, two lots dedicated for future right-of-way for Hawthorne Road, and two lots for stormwater and open space subject to conditions. F. Council Decision, Rezone by Contract North Star Supply LLC. Council may wish to adopt its decision granting a request by North Star Supply LLC to rezone by contract approximately 2.99 acres of undeveloped land located south of the interstate between South Fifth Avenue and Hildreth Drive from residential, commercial, professional, RCP to Light Industrial, LI, for the sole use of wholesale cells pursuant to Pocatello Municipal Code 17.02.180BI, subject to conditions. G. Council Decision, Crestview Estates, Division Two, Final Plat Approval. Council may wish to adopt its decision approving the final plat for Crestview Estates, Division Two, which subdivides approximately 28.73 acres of land into 33 lots, subject to conditions. The property is located north of Crestview Estates, Division One, and east of Satterfield Drive, and is zoned residential low-density RL. Andrews Street and Legacy Drive provide access to the site from the north and will be southward Iron Bend Drive. New Street will provide access from the east. H. Council Decision, Net Profit Subdivision, Final Plat Approval. Final short plat approval. Council may wish to adopt its decision approving the final short plat for Net Profit Subdivision, which subdivides approximately .50 acres of land into two residential lots, subject to conditions. The property is located at the south 72 and a half feet of lot to less west 10.71 feet on the north and 25 feet on the south. Block One, Richards, Richland Town Site, Bennett County, Idaho, and is zoned residential medium-density, single-family, RMS. Lot One will have direct access from Poole Avenue and Lot Two from McKinley Avenue. I, Exceptional Request, 21st Annual Run With The Big Dogs Event. Council may wish to grant an exception to City Ordinance 12.36.030, Dog and Animals in Ross Park for the day of Saturday, April 21, 2018, so the animal shelter can hold their 21st Annual Fundraiser Event. Dogs under control of their owners will be attending the event. The Pocatello Animal Shelter seeks conditional approval for the annual events and associated exceptions to City Ordinance 12.36.20 and 5.06.010 in the future years, subject to Parks and Recreation Director's Review, and barring any significant changes to the event.
Mr. Mayor, I will approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by President Johnston and a second by Adamson. Ann, could you please call the roll?
Johnston.
Yes.
Adamson.
Yes.
Frey.
Yes.
Cheatham.
Yes.
Lorick.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Four, Communication and Proclamation. We have no proclamations, and I'm not seeing any current Boy Scouts right now. So we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Five, which is a calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On March 1 at 9:00 a.m., we will have a budget development meeting immediately followed by a City Council Liaison Working Lunch. On March 1 at 5:30 p.m. will be a clarification meeting. On March 1 at 6:00 p.m. will be a regular City Council meeting. On March 8 at 9:00 a.m., a study session immediately followed by a budget development meeting. On March 9, 12 noon, joint cities meeting at Chubik City Hall. Other events, the Simplock Games will be held at Holt Arena, February 15 through the 17, and we have 2,278 athletes at the events this year, so it's a great turnout. And then also, city offices will be closed February 19 for President's Day. However, garbage and recycle pickups will remain on schedule. All right, so we will move on to, oh, I forgot to announce that if you're here for Agenda Item Number 10, that has been pulled from the agenda. I forgot to announce that at first, I apologize for that. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Six now, which is a public hearing, corner of Poline and Eldridge Roads. This time it's been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding a request by Jeff, Jeff, how do I say your name?
Mafugio.
Mafugio, on behalf of Idaho Power Company, to rezone by contract a parcel of vacant land at the northwest corner of Poline and Eldridge Roads and east of Faith Lutheran Church from residential, commercial, residential, commercial, professional to residential medium-density single-family to light industrial to be utilized for the sole use of a power substation. At their meeting on January 24, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request. I declare the public hearing open. This is a land thing, so, Council, has there been any expedited communication?
Mr. Mayor, I have communicated with some of the members of Idaho Power and with some of the neighbors, and I have made a site visit, not only to this site, but to two other substations.
All right, thanks for that knowledge. I don't know why we're doing that.
It's just a disclosure.
Okay, all right, so you can still vote.
Fully disclosed.
Fully disclosed.
You betcha I can vote.
Perfect, all right, sounds great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I also talked with a member of Idaho Power this morning about the adjacent vacant 15 feet of land that uputs this piece of property. We didn't discuss the substation, but we did that vacant 15 feet.
Okay, perfect. And all right, any others? All right, thank you. So with that, then we would ask Jeff to come on up.
Thank you, Mayor and Council Members. My name is Jeff Mafugio with Idaho Power. Address is 1221 West Idaho Street, Boise, Idaho, 83702. Just wanted to cover a little agenda on this presentation today. I want to do a brief overview of the electrical grid, how lines look on poles, the need and objectives of the project, the project site proposal, brief standards of evaluation, and wrap up with some questions. I believe you have material in front of you and application packet and some additional items that were submitted after the planning and zoning hearing. So just quickly, electrical system, this is a transmission line pole we have in Eagle. It's very similar to what we use across our service territory. Up top here, you have the transmission wires. Those are like an interstate or state highway system. They move bulk electricity around the grid from substation to substation. You see the larger one, transmission lines move from power generation sources. Down below here on this crossarm is the distribution level. That's like the local roads coming out of substations and delivering to customers of whatever type might be. And then usually at the bottom here is other utilities. We share our poles with the cable, phone, fiber in the effort to minimize the number of poles we have along roads or in different areas. And tonight we're talking about a substation. That's like a connection point or off-ramp of ramping down voltages to spread it out to where it's needed. So, you know, why are we here? Pocatello and its surrounding area are growing rapidly. There's a lot of interest in economic development based on sources from the Chamber of Commerce, economic development agencies. You know, there's a lot of opportunity here, and part of that opportunity is being able to serve electrically. So Idaho Power's objective is to serve all customers in the future with reliable, responsible, fair-priced energy. And that's why we're here today to present this project proposal. So the objectives of the project were to look for serving this high-growth area in Pocatello, as well as to offset the needs of these other substations surrounding Pocatello. Tonight, there's, you know, the consideration of annexation of a big development area here, and that will, without this proposal tonight, that will put a lot of tax on this Highland substation. So the system is interconnected. Lines are interconnected. Substations are serving their location, but they're supporting the city as a whole. So we looked as our objectives to enhance service and safety by replacing outdated electrical facilities. We had this Busire substation here built probably more than 50 years ago. It's, I don't know if you've ever seen it, it's attached to the side of a warehouse building. It's got wood to support it instead of steel like we use nowadays, and it's limited in what it can provide electrically to the area. We also want to increase reliability and resiliency in Pocatello. As I said, the system is interconnected, and so we're able to bring up the service in this area and again help these outer substations serve the growth that they're seeing. Finally, increasing capacity to existing customers and increasing future growth opportunities in Pocatello. So we considered several items. We had several site alternatives we looked at. We were really preferring to be up closer to Quinn Road or even a little further north with all the development going on here. We looked at the community and the area characters of where a substation might fit in, the compatibility, existing and future utilities and road routes or plans, proximity to transmission lines. Less transmission lines you have to build through town, you know, usually that's preferred. And then the ability to serve effectively, the ability to serve effectively, and then also the acquisition, timing and the cost to acquire property. And so we looked at these sites. We spent more than a year on trying to acquire some other properties. We were really pursuing an opportunity here on the Gateway West Industrial Park that, as of the P&amp;Z hearing, it was still in port. And so we started, we pursued an option here, working with the Faith Lutheran Church, to acquire their 1.2-acre field. So this is a general layout of the area here, and so the 1.2-acre site is located at the northwest corner of Poline Road and West Eldridge Road, and it does meet several of the considerations we have for a substation site. It is really as far south as we would like to go, serving this general area. What that does allow is for us to have to build less transmission from the existing lines on Highway 30, and the route for that transmission line is proposed to rebuild existing transmission on Cedar Street and then up Poline Road to this site. And so we did purchase this property from Faith Lutheran on December 18, 2017, after thorough consideration by the church leaders and their congregation. This is a site plan of the, a general layout of the project site, and we have some more detail here, but this is Faith Lutheran Church, their 1.2-acre site, and this is what a full build-out would be upwards of 30 years from now. I'll show you in a minute. There's, some of these facilities are for future build-out. We wouldn't build everything here at once. We do have two gates along Poline Road, primarily needing two for ingress and egress during construction to avoid backing of traffic along Poline as we bring in large equipment. Our intent really would be to use one of those gates once completed, and very seldom would we even need to access the site. We typically do that with a pickup truck, but everything is operated remotely nowadays. Just kind of late development, so there's a 15-foot strip of property right here. Just in the past couple days, we've been able to finally find the owner of that property, and they didn't know it was, they owned it, so we're pursuing purchasing that property. We don't have any intended use for that now, but there's opportunity of working with Public Works or just to have some additional setback on the substation.
Would that be a more desirable entry if it was off of West Eldridge instead of the busy Poline Road?
You know, that's a great question, Counselor. I, you know, we've laid this out where we did not think we would have that opportunity. We could certainly consider a gate in this area. You know, that's something we could work out with our designers. Again, this was a very recent, very recent activity, and so we could look at that, but I think, again, we primarily just need the one access point once constructed.
Thank you.
So this, I did provide a copy of this if you want to, it might be a little easier to look at. I think y'all should have a copy. So in the orange, it's very dark here, is what we're proposing immediately. So starting here, this is the fence and the gates. So it's going to be, we're proposing a seven, eight-foot precast concrete fence that'll have some texture. We're gonna, we've committed to working with the church and the building department on what that might look like. There's different types of options. I'll show an example we've used recently in Nampa with 30-foot wide wrought iron gates. So it's a little nicer than our typical chain link setup. That helps to mitigate for visual impacts of a substation. Right here, we'll have the transmission line coming in off of Poline Road, and then it'll bring wires over to the breaker, and then that brings electricity to this transformer here, and that's the main source of how the power is broken out. That's where, if there, with any noise, the noise source would be here, and I'll explain that a little bit, a couple slides from now. And we'll have a control building up here, approximately 28-foot by 30-foot and approximately 12-foot high. There's really, the, there's no plans for any offices or anything there. It's primarily to store equipment that's monitoring the station. And then underground, we have these, what we call a duct bank. That's just running cables underground. And then this metal plaid building, that's where all the circuitries come in from the duct bank, and then they go out underground into the distribution system. And so we have grayed out here in like a 25 to 30-year build-out. As growth occurs, we would have a second transformer here and an addition here to the duct bank. Right here is what we call a mobile transformer, where we would bring one in in emergency on the back of a truck or a trailer. That would only be ever in the instance we have to work on this transformer, and this one is not in place. It's very unlikely situation, but we have to consider that when we're planning out the space of the substation. So generally, you can see it's a pretty open area. It won't be filled up with steel and wires like some of our other substations in the So here's an example. This is over near Eagle, Idaho. This is a typical 138 kilovolt substation. Up here is that dead-end pole. The control building's kind of hidden back here behind these arbivitas. And again, just, this is our typical chain link fence with some arbivitas. This is a transformer right here, and this building right here is that metal plaid where all the circuits kind of break out in distribution. And so with that, we're proposing this type of fencing. Again, this is precast concrete and water-efficient landscaping. This is just an example of what we did at the College of Western Idaho Campus. We had to put a substation pretty much in the middle of campus to serve that area, and there's some different texture opportunities here that we'll work with the church and the city on. And then this is what the wrought iron gates will look like. You can see it splits in half. There's kind of a, you know, pedestrian door there, gate, gate-to-gate, that, you know, we don't need to bring a truck in, we can park our pickup at the driveway apron and walk in. The intent there, of course, is once constructed, we would have no impact to traffic along Poline. So just a quick overview of the standards of evaluation. So there is a little split here in the property where it covers two zones, the RCP zone, residential, commercial, professional, I believe, and the residential medium-density zone. So this free zone is to cover both zones on this property. So just quickly, again, there's growth in the areas driving the need for this project to serve existing and future customers. The location has become the most viable option in terms of being able to acquire property, our system planning and minimizing the number of overhead lines in the area. Again, we're rebuilding along existing power lines. Finally, there will be no additional public costs for the station to the city or to its residents, which are our customers. As growth continues, expansion of the electrical system is needed. Doing nothing has a cost as well, and that's increased operation maintenance expenses for older facilities, potential limitations on capacity and reliability. For example, we would not be able to remove the older Busire substation on the Gateway West Industrial Park. Also, the station's been designed to be compatible with the zoning development, set back standards of partial to suitable size. A rezone by contract is intended as proposed, that the rezone Light Industrial only allowed this substation, no other Light Industrial uses. And with that, accompaniment plan update is not being requested. And then we've effectively designed the station to reduce aesthetic and operational impacts to adjacent properties and utilities, and we do not believe there will be any undesirable effects such as odors, fumes, vibrations, or noise. And so to touch on noise real quick, that's always a concern. With this station, we worked with the manufacturer to get some guarantee on the noise levels, on what they build it to. And so, again, I provided a copy of this chart, if y'all have, if y'all ever want to look at that. So we've been guaranteed that within six feet of the transformer, it would be approximately 59 decibels, or here, kind of between a quiet office and normal conversation. With the max noise level of 135 feet, which is just outside the fence, it's approximately 43 decibels, or the sound of a modern refrigerator humming. And then the max noise level of 210 feet, which we measured from the front of the church as well as homes to the north, and this is from the transformer itself, is approximately 37 decibels, which is, which is a whisper, is if I stop talking, it's this. We did do some comparison measurements of some of our existing substations that were built in the 60s and 70s, and at that chain link fence, we found the noise des... And at the, at that chain link fence, we found the noise decibel speed approximately in this 59 decibel range. Again, this is a brand-new transformer. It's like a brand-new car is a lot quieter than 1983 Chevy Cavalier. So again, this is a, and with that, I think we'll stand for any questions.
Questions, Counsel?
I had a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned that the full build out would be over 30 years, and it sounds like you're planning on doing the fencing as the early stages of that 30 years, right? So that would be towards the beginning. What about the landscaping? Would that also be done towards the beginning?
Sure, and that's a great question. So the fencing, the fencing and the first, I guess you could say the first phase, some of these items, items in origin would be done immediately. The landscaping is typically last, but almost immediate, you know, within the, I think it's what, about three months to build a station? So we'd be putting the landscaping right, right after everything's in, because we don't want to, you don't want to put landscaping in and run over it with a tractor or a truck. So it'd be, it'd be very soon after we get the station going. But the full build out, what I meant by that was, when we need that second transformer, it could be 25 to, or 15 to 30 years, really.
Any other questions?
When you talk about the transportation lines, are you going to have to enhance transportation lines in that area to serve that substation?
Enhanced?
Yeah, I mean, build bigger ones.
Yeah, they'll, they'll be taller, they'll be similar to some of the other lines in the area, under, well, around 75 feet to accommodate up to two transmission lines for any future build out. Again, long-term planning, as well as the existing distribution lines and other utilities as, as we typically have on our poles. And that, that max height is actually at some of the intersections where we need to have good clearance over the intersection cameras, so it's, it's up to that 75-foot range.
One of your illustrations showed the Hoku substation.
Yeah.
Is that performing at all?
Let me, let me get back to that here. That's a great question, and a very complicated answer. It is not currently. It was built, it was built with the intention of serving Hoku. It was, it's also still available for any, any future, you know, development that occurs in this area. In terms of being able to serve this area, it would, it would be, well, maybe I'm going beyond what the question is.
My question was, if you have a resource that's not being used, and part of your growth is just about as close to it, can you utilize that at all?
So, so, you know, that's a good question. And so there are no transformers at the Hoku substation right now. They were purchased by Hoku, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tim. Yeah. Tim Phillips, our product leader, maybe he can provide more clarity. But generally, you know, it's kind of like having a, we have to build additional distribution lines to this area, and so the further those lines go, first of all, there'd be, there'd be more overhead lines, and then we'd see more voltage loss at the end of that. So it's really not an ideal location to serve this general area. It's, it's more ideal to serve future industrial growth in this area.
Mr. Mayor, Counsel. Tim Phillips, someone, project leader. So yeah.
Tim, if you would, there you go. So we can get the people at home watching.
Okay, all right. Yes, with the distribution lines, the transmission lines can go obviously a lot farther distance. When you get, when you hit the substation, when you drop that voltage down to about 12,000 volts, it's like the, the wire out of the end of a hose. You, you get going too far at the end of that hose, you don't have much pressure to the end of it. So from the Hoku substation to where we really want to be, up there near Queen Road, just don't have a lot of voltage, it's too far to serve that area from the Hoku site.
Thank you. Any other questions? Are you going to add transmission line, or are you going to replace existing transmission line to serve this substation?
Both, along, from Highway 30, we'll connect to this existing transmission line right here, and we'll go east on Cedar. That's, that's a new transmission line. That's a new portion transmission line. And then we'll replace the transmission line along Poline Road.
Looking at the letters, some of the letters from residents in the area, there's one point that someone makes about Fort Hall Irrigations and Fort Hall Councils of Irrigations controls all water rights for this area, and this runs through the property. I was just wondering about that, and what impact this might have on the water. Is that, is there any problem there?
So there is an existing pipe right, right along the edge of the property here. We don't believe there will be any issue. We always work to mitigate, to prevent any impact of that. If, if whenever we damage something like that, we repair or replace to existing or better conditions.
But that would be protected?
Yes.
Covered?
Yes. And, and we believe that there's a 15-foot easement there, so we would avoid building over top of that, or, or in effect, or block access to the, to the pipe.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Carl Anderson. I'm a senior planner here with the City of Pocatello. As stated by the applicant and in the agenda, you have before you an application for rezone by contract submitted by Idaho Power and represented by Jeff Mancucci for the rezoning of the existing residential, commercial, professional, and a 40-foot strip of residential medium-density single-family to light industrial for the sole use of a substation. Per staff's analysis detailed in the attached staff report, staff concludes that the proposed development is compatible in terms of scale, mass, coverage, density, and intensity with the surrounding land uses. The application for rezone by contract was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission on January 24th, where the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval to City Council for, of the rezone by contract. All necessary requirements for this application have been met, and we have received full written comments, which are included in the staff report, and public comment was also received at the Planning and Zoning Commission on January 24th. The council may wish to adopt the Planning and Zoning Commission findings effect and approve the rezone by contract of the 1.2 acres of land from the existing residential medium-density city single-family and residential commercial professional to the light industrial for the sole use as a substation. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have one question. I have heard discussions about Poline Road and its development as a main, a more major artery for Pocatello. And some of the talk was the existing transmission lines up and down Poline. Will this impact that negatively if we were to do that? And I've heard that we might need to move back some of the lines, all that kind of stuff. What's your view on that?
Currently, transmission lines along that section are permitted, and this might be a good question for the applicant as to whether or not they'll actually be replacing some of those transmission lines, or that are existing, once the new transmission lines are in place. I do know that the applicant is currently in the process of locating the new transmission lines.
So the question I would have following up on that is, there, the possibility that we would be expanding Poline Road? Maybe Jeff can respond to that, whether or not we would need to make sure we're not creating increased expense.
Sure, absolutely.
That's what you were asking?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Jeff Mansfield, Public Works Director. So currently, we don't have any plans to expand Poline Road. However, in the future, that would be something that we would, we would definitely be interested in considering and in looking into that. And I know, I know Merrill's been working closely with Idaho Power and talking to them about some of our future, you know, possibilities, and trying to make sure that we have the right of way that we need along there. Correct me if I'm wrong, don't a lot of your poles run on the east side of Poline now? So, you know, that, that would be the area that, you know, we would have to work with those landowners and try to help develop space for those poles along the east side of Poline.
Issue is that landowners and that property is tied up in a court proceedings right now, so.
But they're running eastwards, I don't know.
Big burn?
You're saying that we would have to gain a greater easement off of, off the landowners on the?
On the east side of Poline, correct. Yeah.
Well, just a round figure, how much would it cost if we all wants to say we've got to expand Poline? They've done this addition, and we have to move those transmission lines over another 10 or 15 feet.
I, I couldn't answer that right now. I'd have to look at some numbers.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Jeff? Thank you, Jeff. Any questions for Carl before he goes back to his real seat? Okay, Carl, is there any other correspondence other than what we've seen?
We've written comments, and the correspondence that I've had have been with residents who have submitted comments. Epat, Sheila Griffith, and Dwight Clark have all spoken to me over the phone, both prior.
Dwight Crandall. Dwight Crandall.
Dwight Crandall, thank you. I've spoken to me prior and after the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Okay, super. Okay, thank you. Connie, is there any correspondence?
No, for the correspondence.
Okay, super. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then we would move forward to any of those would like to show support for the application? Any of those that are uncommitted to the application? Any of those that are opposed to the application?
Nikki Tason, 4963 Yellowstone, Chubbeck. I'm opposed for several reasons. One, I prefer that we move away from everybody becoming dependent on more Idaho power, also that's controlled by government. And it does cost people a lot of money, costs have gone up. It's not appropriate location when you're right by a church or residential area, and a very busy road that is very narrow. And I thought that there was plans to expand Poline Road, I remember a discussion about that when I used to ride my bike. And especially if that gate is going to be off of Poline Road. I've been around a transformer thing over in Old Town, and it is very loud. And it might be an older one, granted, I don't know. But I think it's not an appropriate location with what is there, as well as being close to NOP Park. And also, the county passed, or I don't know if it's a resolution ordinance, whatever, putting energy conservation under international code. That's UN dictating things over our power sources in Idaho and also Bannock County, which is an act of treason. And so I would definitely question how that would apply to this, and I encourage you to look into that, because the standards are far different than what American standards are. And it's moving more into other realms of construction, even childcare in Pocatello I also would like the city to read the other comments into the record that you have received. That should be done under Idaho Open Meeting Law. There are undesirable effects, whether, I mean, I do landscape work wherever I've seen power sources, the plants around them are a lot weaker. There are emissions, whether it's a sound, it's a vibration, whatever, they are harmful, especially for humans and animals that have heart and brain function that function off of electric impulse. It's the same thing when a child plays electric, electronic media games. And cell tower, you know, how they have an electric impulse, not just radiation exposure. And so those are my concerns. Can I share that in the energy space?
Thank you. Any others opposed to the application? Seeing none, we would turn the time back over to you, Jeff, if you'd like to answer any questions, or have any rebuttal. Do we have a count, you have a question? So we do have a question for you, so if you'd step up, thank you. My understanding is that you're buying this land from the church it's adjacent to, right?
Yes, sir. We entered into a option agreement on December, I know I have the date, but December 17th, yes.
In other words, your most immediate neighbor is participating in this?
Yes, and we, prior to the Planning and Zoning hearing, we met with all neighboring property owners to discuss any concerns they have, and there were none expressed at that time.
And you are trying to obtain the 15-foot strip?
Yes, sir.
On this, and your plan is to maintain that well, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, answered some of those questions. Absolutely. Okay, any other questions for your mayor? Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Would it be permissible to ask a question of one of the people that sent a letter to us that's in the audience but has not spoken? I'll go ahead and do it. Would you respond for me? Tell the rest of them who you are.
I'm Sheila Griffith. I, I live in the pastor's used-to-be house from the church, so it's just kitty-corner from their property.
The question I have, Sheila, you gave us some very nice information. Are you concerned at all about the noise level that would be?
I was at first, but in talking to Idaho Power, and we went around and listened to a lot of them that are around, and they were noisy, but they assured us that they're quieter. And the nice thing about this is on the south side, there's a street, so that will be some distance. Then there's a commercial building, then there's the NOP Park, that part, there's nobody living there. But there's one house just north that's really close. The church isn't getting here a lot anyways, because they're only there once a day. So if you look at, I mean, they've tried to find a better place, and I think in all and all, it's probably the best they can do.
Thank you very much.
I am grateful for a big pine tree that will block my view from it. And the church planted it years ago, so I guess they put it there for my benefit. At the time that I came during the zoning meeting, with the zoning and planning, my big concern was that 15-inch, 15-foot strip, that it would be an eyesore, but it sounds like they've covered it very well, and will maintain it very well until something else comes up better. I was very concerned about the magnetic field, but it doesn't sound like it's a concern that I thought it might be, so my concerns have been helped there along.
Thank you very much.
So.
Super. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like another word? Would you like to, okay, super. I declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, this is for you. How do you wish to proceed?
I have a question. The comment was brought up that we need to read some comments out loud, that were in our packet, even though they're online and we have them here. Is that, I have a question for our city attorney. Is that something we need to do in accordance with Idaho Open Meeting Law, or is it sufficient to have that in the packet available to the public?
Those comments are public record, and they're available, they're part of the packet. There's no requirement that says they have to be read into the record.
Is this where we need a motion for?
That's the shot I'm looking for. I just don't know what you want to do with this now, right now, counsel.
I would move that we adopt the Planning and Zoning Commission's finding the fact and approve the rezoning by contract of the 1.2 acres, more or less, of land from the existing residential, commercial, professional, and residential medium-density single-family zoning to light industrial for the sole zoning to light industrial for the sole purpose of electric substation.
Second.
We have a motion by President Johnston and a second by Cheatham. And could you please call the roll?
Johnston?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Thank you. We will move on to agenda item number seven, then, exception and proposal request, Elston. Counsel may ask, counsel is asked to consider a request and a proposal from Art Elston for the following at the northwest intersection of Highland Boulevard and Gwin Drive on a parcel of land approximately four acres. A, an exception to city code 12.02.040 and 12.04.030 requiring Mr. Elston to install curb and gutter and sidewalk and/or signing a real covenant obligating said improvements in the future. And B, proposal for the city, for a city-funded fire hydrant line under Highland Boulevard. Staff recommends upholding the city ordinance and standards for private development within the city limits. This is not a public hearing.
Could we hear from the applicant?
Absolutely. If you would like to, you surely can. Would you like to?
Yes.
All right.
And Mr. Mayor, counsel, my name's Art Elston, and we live in Chubak currently and retired and sold our property in another state and purchased this land at Gwin and Highland in 2016 and intended to build a single-family home on the property. So we started to do that, we put in a sewer and got the architect's plans together and went forward and we discovered that there was no fire hydrants in that area. And I don't know if you had an opportunity to review the presentation that I sent, but there's an island without fire hydrants there. There's five properties in addition to the four acres that we have there. And there's, I believe, 13 separate lots on the other side of Highland that don't have fire hydrant coverage currently. We went through the neighborhoods and if you'll see in the presentation, I brought a junk drive, but I didn't realize I needed a computer here, but regardless. Everything in the neighborhood is covered within 500 feet. There are fire hydrants both below Highland and above Highland. There are no fire hydrants, as I stated in this area, that's within those presentations. And so the expense involved in originally, the plan was to bring a fire hydrant from the top of Gwin across from the Franklin School there, all the way down through the city, the street, at a cost to us of around $125,000. And that was before we discovered that there were no fire hydrants in that area. So I put together a plan. I've talked to construction companies that have worked in the area, found out what happened within, or what's happening within that area and what's taken place in the past. And so I put together a plan to bring a fire hydrant up from Orchard. It's only about 15 feet up, put it underneath Highland at the corner of Gwin and Highland, and that allows an easy run up Highland to cover those other houses. And I've put together some costs in that presentation. If I were to do it, and as the staff had recommended that I pay for it, and then the city would own it, and I'm recommending that the city own it and install it and then be set up to run those pipes all the way up Highland and cover those five old homes and properties that are sitting on large lots with a lot of empty grassland and those 13 empty properties on the, be the east side of Highland, so that we can get those covered so just for a matter of infill with proper, you know, city coverage for fire hydrants in that area. We feel that the city should cover those costs. If I were to have to do it, there's an additional cost, I would have to put a backflow preventer in a concrete box in there, another $7,000 to $8,000 plus the installation of that, call it private property. And that's kind of where we're at as far as that goes. It's only $30,000 if we cover it to put it through there. If the city does it, the city apparently has a lot of new equipment. And we feel that they could do it a lot cheaper without a backflow preventer and could put that in. Coincidentally, that is a small chunk, if you look in that presentation, a very, very small little sliver of private land that I went through Pioneer Title and through the county assessor's office to see if there was an easement there. The, there is infrastructure there, there's no official easement. There's a 36-inch conduit, drainage pipe that runs through the property there. There is a sewer line that runs through the property there, but there's no official easement. So I would be requesting that the city continue that, get an easement for that and put that small little property, or small little line in there, it's probably 40 to 50 feet that we need an easement. Now, I have discussed this with Captain Powell on a couple of different occasions from the fire department, and their recommendation was that we go up above that, go up to Valley View, cut through 150 feet of people's backyards that's landscaped and fencing and all that, and put that at the corner of our property up there at Highland and Gwin. But that will not serve the rest of those homes that do not have fire hydrant coverage and won't do anything for the east side of Highland. So if you look at the presentation that I sent, you'll see that there's a, literally an island for the whole entire neighborhood that has no fire hydrant coverage today. And that obviously includes our land. So that's the number one issue. The number two issue that we ran into when we got here was, met with the city and they had mentioned that they were going to require, if they approved the plans for the house, that they would require us to sometime in the future pay to put sidewalks around four acres of cliffs and, and I don't know if you've seen this area, it's mountainous, the roads cut through it, there's 15, 20 feet high around the Highland side and the road goes up Gwin. Then there's barriers on either side of that with deep crevices, 50 feet on either side. We can't put sidewalks in there. And if we were to put a little sidewalk around where we planned to put a driveway, we'd end up with what I call the sidewalk to nowhere. It just doesn't go anywhere. Coincidentally, there's already a sidewalk on the south or east side of Highland, runs all the way down. And I have to mention strangely enough, there are no sidewalks from the neighborhood at the top of Gwin for Franklin School, no sidewalks across it, there's no sidewalks in front of the church, and there's no sidewalks in front of the other four-acre property on the other side of Gwin. There is also a brand-new structure that's just been put in across from Franklin School with a nice culvert and a concrete driveway. And they're required to put no sidewalks or curbs or gutters in in that area either. So with that being said, I'm not sure why we would be required to tie something in the future to our, our house that the city could say, well, you know, you approved building the house, so now you have to pay to put in the sidewalks at $100,000 or whatever around this property or what it's going to be in 10 or 15 years. That tied to the house would mean that we would never be able to sell the property. And it just makes it difficult to leave it to our children. The only other option we have right now is to leave the property the way that it is, put it in a trust for our kids and let them have it when, when all of this, you know, done and over and we're not here in 30 years. So that's where we stand with it. Unfortunately, people are dumping on top of the property, the four-wheelers are destroying it, it's ugly. And our intention obviously would be to fix that, stop it and make it back to natural and make it so that the four-wheelers and people wouldn't be able to dump on the property anymore. So that's where we stand. And I hope you've had an opportunity to review the presentations. I thought that there would already be a laptop here, I didn't want to use these peoples, but, so I brought a junk drive if anybody's interested in downloading any of it, and I asked that it be distributed, and Ruth was gracious enough to distribute it to everybody for their approval. So at any rate, that's kind of where we stand. And we need an answer so we'll know whether we need to move on and do something else. So as a citizen of the city, we're kind of hoping that we would get an approval and we could move forward. And I thank you for your time.
Do you have any questions for him?
There was some mention of the, of the real covenant.
Yes.
Could you explain your reaction to that?
I don't feel that if we put a real covenant on that, on that house and that property, that it's not a saleable item. It's like having a lien on the property, in my viewpoint, we might be wrong. But anybody that wants to buy that property is tied to some future cost to run sidewalks in an area that's very rough, that would take a phenomenal amount of money to infill on either side of Gwin to put sidewalks in there, just to build it up. Because right now it's just got concrete barriers because of, it's icy up there, you know, the cars want to slide off. So there's no place to walk, there's no place to do anything if you wanted to. I've seen a couple people put their bikes up there, but nobody walks up there. And it's also steep and the canyons are on both sides of the road, as I mentioned. So tying it to the house is not an option in, in my view.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Can we ask some questions of our staff?
Absolutely.
Merrill Coyle, the Development and Public Works Engineer for City Pocatello. You have a question?
Yes, I have several questions. So first, let's talk about fire hydrant coverage. So I understand there are some properties that currently do not have coverage. Is that common to find that in the city or is that an anomaly?
We do have areas within the city of Pocatello city limits due to historic building that are outside of the, the code for fire department flow and their, their fire apparatus pertinences. The, the codes have changed over the years also, so those, from back in many years ago to current in the last 20 to 30 years. So the building before that, that we do have areas that are out of, out of those areas. We have been, we look at those and as, if they fall within our capital improvement areas, we, we work on, work on doing that. One of the instances that you'll see is these water lines that are in the easements behind homes and that. The water department has been through their capital improvement areas and the priority areas, moving those water lines into the streets, they're more accessible and to be able to upgrade from the old system. This, there's a four-inch line behind these properties, behind Valley View properties, and it's, it's slated for a future, but it's not been given a date for that capital improvement project. But it, it has been discussed and again, it's, it's a lower priority at this time because there's other areas that need to be addressed before this one.
Four-inch line behind the properties for what purpose?
It is for serving all of the, the lines and properties there on Valley View.
It is their culinary water?
It is the culinary water, but that, like I said, in the future will be relocated. And at that time for culinary water, there's a few properties that is on Highland Boulevard and that, and those will be made arrangements so that the, they will continue to be served off possibly an easement that comes through there and feeds off of Valley View.
And whose expense will that be?
That will be through the capital improvement project with the water department at that time, but it's not slated.
So the residents would not have to pay?
No, that will be with the rate payers at that time. And because it's existing and it's, it's historical.
All rate payers across the city.
Development that's already there, that's been there for years and years. I can't remember the dates, but it's, they date back into the 50s and 60s.
So what we've done in the past, when we've upgraded and pulled a water line out of the backyard of people, we've moved it to the road. And then we've also allowed it X amount of dollars so that that will help them run their line from the new water line to their house, opposed to having any expenses over and above what they've got.
So where that would be between Valley View and Art's home, could he potentially tie into that in the future?
His culinary water has already been approved to come off of that line for, for culinary water only, not fire flow.
Okay.
I'm going to ask about the real covenant. How common that is, people signing that? And also are there other people up in this area that have signed those?
Yes, the real covenant, I've been working in this position for 20 years and you've used this real covenant, was established so that because of situations like this that might have some different issues with the ordinance, it says that you will put the curb, gutter and sidewalk in at this time. Over that time period, we've probably signed maybe 35 to 40 of real covenants. We've had a couple of them come to this prior city councils requesting that to be waived, and both of those were denied to be waived. And to answer the question there, the new, new area that Mr. Elston has discussed about that was put in within the last year, that person also signed a real covenant and came in, visited with us and with the legal department, and he, he signed the real covenant.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Steph? Thank you, Mayor.
Is this where he's almost like to go? This is, this is that corner.
Yeah, what are you, we're there on that end of the day, so what have we talked about here?
Just where he's going to build his house on that lot.
So if we're, if we can have some discussion right now, I have a comment or two. So I'm a little bit conflicted because I can totally see the point in not wanting to build a sidewalk to nowhere and, you know, go to all of that added expense. I don't perceive that a sidewalk, I mean, curb and gutter and sidewalk is beneficial to the city in many places, but I'm not sure that it would be in this particular instance. But I'm having a little bit of conflict because I have the knowledge that the people up the street had to sign the real covenant and other people in town have had to do the same thing. And so I'm, I'm having a little bit of a dilemma over that. I don't want to get ourselves into a legal issue. And maybe our city attorney would care to comment on that, but I'm kind of piqued about that.
I went up there and saw the new property and his responsibility would be minuscule compared with this case of where the property is in relationship to Gwin Street going up there. He might have... He might have 100 feet of curb and gutter that he'd have to put in.
I would actually have somewhere around 1,000.
No, I don't mean you, the other guy.
Yeah, maximum.
So, we'll discuss it up here. Sorry about that.
So I guess my question is, what are the ramifications to us if we were to waive the real covenant? Do we have an issue?
Just a minute. Jim, is this the agenda item that you felt that you needed to read?
Full disclosure, our company's solding the property.
So are you?
I feel I can participate in the discussion, but I won't be voting on any motions.
So I don't know that you can be participating in the discussion if you're not voting, is that wrong or right?
Council President Johnson, I think the best practice would be if you're going to recuse yourself from the vote, would be also to recuse yourself from the deliberations, which is the thing for that.
Okay, I will recuse myself from all deliberations. I'm easy.
Mayor, could we, remember the fire department here, could we ask him a question?
Sure.
Trap Smith, since Jeep Operations, Pocatello Fire Department.
How would you fight a fire in this section of Highland Boulevard?
You would stretch a lot of line from the nearest hydrant.
So you would, would an engine carry enough line?
I don't know where the nearest line is, I'd have to defer to staff. I haven't viewed this, it's kind of out of my parlay, I'm the operations chief that, I didn't look close at that. Code enforcement hasn't been working with the homeowner or the landowner, so I really have to defer, but if you, you know, we have water, we have ability to move water long distance in line, it's not optimal and it's not fast.
Mr. Elston's, the information he provided indicates it's over 500 feet and there's tied to.
We carry approximately 800, 1,000 feet of large diameter supply line in each fire truck, but that, you know, that takes into, you have to take into account whether that's uphill or downhill, and what our friction loss is going to be in each one of our lines, and how much water we're going to be able to apply to the property, or how big the fire is, and lots of variables in there. So, I know he's been in correspondence with our Fire Prevention Bureau, and they've talked about, you know, solutions and alternatives, and I would defer to them before I made any real comment, but to answer your question directly, we can stretch the line about 5,000 feet on initial response, but that doesn't get enough water to a big enough fire, so, and that's a bunch of relay pumping with fire trucks in between all those long thousand-foot layers.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, can I ask Merrill one more question?
Merrill?
Mm-hmm.
Merrill?
I just thought of one other thing that was included in here, was the issue of water runoff, you know, and having the gutters provide a place for it to go, and I was wondering if they're not there, what, is that a problem, what happens?
There is the issue with the asphalt preservation, and curb and gutter does hold and helps with that preservation of the asphalt and the shoulder work. Without the curb and gutter, then there's routine maintenance that has to be done along the gutters, and you'll see this in the areas that don't have curb and gutter, where the graders are out, moving there, filling in the reels that go along down by the asphalt and so forth. So, and I could answer another question concerning the fire hydrants. There's one there at the top of Gwin across from the church and school, and with the water pressures there, up higher are fairly high. And then there's another one at Valley View and High Line there that would be pulled off. The others are down at Custer that would need to be pulled up from uphill. And one of the requirements with water and fire hydrants, this one particularly, Mr. Elston has chosen to build one house on four acres, and as you can see, this is very non-typical inside the city limits. Typically, you would break the property up into smaller lots and to be able to extend stuff in, so that's another reason why this is being looked at here, is because of his choice, which he can make. However, it is very non-typical to have four acres in the middle of a city that, for the fire flows and the issues and stuff, and that's one reason with development, when development happens, whether it's a single-family home or a subdivision, they are required to complete the infrastructure per city code, no different than anyone else. And for those requests to note, I would just press upon your mind too, that there are other developers and others that have put single-family homes together and developments, and they have been required to pay for all of their infrastructure, and if it is built to city standards and within the right of way, that the city will take them over for the long-term maintenance and upkeep of those once they've passed the warranty period.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mayor. I would just throw into the discussions, some of the conversation has been about Franklin, which is a junior high, versus Jefferson, which is an elementary. I live in that area, I've seen the kids walk up that street, and I think there's a safety issue that we have to have some concern about. I think that's part of the reason of curb and gutter and sidewalk. And I've seen them come down the hills, and I've seen them slide down the hills, and I've seen them tumble down the hills. But they're not on the sidewalks, they're on the hills.
And Mayor, I'm not sure I got to answer Councilwoman Adamson's question earlier.
Okay.
Would you still like me to address that?
Yeah, if it would be, you know, defensible for us to say this is a non-typical situation, and so could we waive the real covenant, or would we have an issue?
So what's being asked here is an exception to the ordinance, and anytime you do that, you have to weigh certain aspects and look at the issues that are around whatever it is that the ordinance requires. In this case, we've applied that ordinance, those same requirements to other properties in the area. So my concern legally would be if and when the city does require that those sidewalks be put in, if the real covenant requirement here is waived, those other property owners that have signed a real covenant would be obligated to fulfill that real covenant, and this property wouldn't, and that would create unfairness at that point, and that's when you would be most likely to be subject to liability.
And I will entertain a motion. Okay, hearing no motion, the request will fail for a lack of motion. So we'll move on to Agenda Item 8. And Merrill, you might, if you would, please get with the applicant here and explain exactly what needs to happen so we can proceed forward. Thank you. Agenda Item 8, Grand Application Airport. Council may wish to approve the submission of the following grant application for a photography exhibit at the airport terminal. A, IFT Foundation Grant in the amount of $4,500 to be used to help fund a new photography exhibit in the airport terminal, and B, authorize the mayor's signature on documents related to the grant, subject to legal department review. To help fund the new photography exhibit in the airport terminal, the grant requires no matching funds.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Cheatham.
Agenda Item Number 8, the grant application for the airport.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Cheatham and a second by Councilwoman Lurick, and could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lorik?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 9, Grand Application, First Avenue Terry Livability Improvement Project. Council may wish to approve the submission of the following grant application for the First Avenue Terry Street Livability Improvement Project and Overlay District. A, a grant application to community builders in an amount not to exceed $40,000 for the district technical assistant, to develop a version of the First Avenue Terry Street Livability Improvement Project and Overlay District for the area down by East Lovejoy Street and North East Putnam Street, to the South Fifth Avenue on the East and South First Avenue on the West. And B, authorize the mayor's signature on all related contract documents, subject to legal department review. Funds for the $5,000 suggested match are available in Fund 955. Councilman Bray.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve this grant application, subject to the criteria A and B that are listed.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Lurick, and could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Lorik?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
No.
Johnston?
No.
Thank you, motion passes. We'll move on to Agenda Item 11, 2018 Material Bid, Water Department. Council may wish to consider bids received on January 23, 2018, for materials to be used by the water department for capital improvement project and to replenish material inventory. The bid was separated into 12 separate lots in an effort to guarantee the lowest price for the city. The recommendations are as follows. A, Ferguson Water Works, Lot 10, $44,763. B, Corin Mine LP, Lot 1, $113,976.60. Lot 3, $31,232. Lot 5, $8,560. Lot 6, $7,514. Lot 7, $5,110.50. Lot 8, $4,289.60. Lot 9, $5,658.50. Lot 12, $267,254.21. For a total of $443,595.41. And C, HD Flower Company, Lot 2, $28,732.88. Lot 4, $74,543.95. And Lot 11, $12,375, for a total of $115,651.83. All vendors submitted the low-responsive bid for each of the lots indicated. The total cost for the materials bid is $604,010.24. Funds are available in the water department fiscal year 2018 budget to cover the expense. Councilwoman Adamson.
Mayor, I move that we approve the bids referenced in A, B, and C of Agenda Item Number 11.
Second.
We have a motion by Adamson and a second by Cheatham, and could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lorik?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 12, Resolution Changing the Name of Housing Authority of the City of Pocatello to Housing Alliance and Community Partnerships. Council may wish to adopt a resolution changing the name of the Housing Authority of the City of Pocatello to Housing Alliance and Community Partnerships, and providing an effective date of February 15, 2018.
Mr. Mayor?
Council President?
I move that we approve the resolution changing the name of the Housing Authority of the City of Pocatello to Housing Alliance and Community Partnership, effective February 15, 2018, and authorize that name change.
Second.
We have a motion by President Johnston and a second by Cheatham, and could you please call the roll?
Johnston?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lorik?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 13, Resolution Adopting Northgate Eligibility Report and Directing Preparation of an Urban Renewal Plan. Council may wish to adopt a resolution determining the Northgate area described in the eligibility report as deteriorated or a deteriorating area, or a combination thereof, and that such area is designated as appropriate for an urban renewal project. Further, the council may wish to direct Pocatello Development Authority, PDA, to commence preparation of an urban renewal plan for the consideration by the PDA Board, and if acceptable, final consideration by the city council in compliance with Chapters 20 and 29, Title 50 Idaho Code as amended.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Cheatham.
I move approval of Agenda Item Number 15, the resolution adopting the Northgate Eligibility Report and directing prep of an urban renewal plan.
Second.
13?
What did I say?
14.
I said 13, sorry.
13, okay. We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Johnston, and could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lorik?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 14 is an ordinance, an ordinance which annexes a parcel of land comprised of approximately 296.82 acres owned by Town Center JV, Portniv Development LLC, Millennial Development Partners LLC, Robert Hart, and Portniv Health Trust Incorporated. Council, how do you wish to have the ordinance read? Councilman Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I move that ordinance item, Agenda Item Number 14, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Johnston, and could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lorik?
Yes.
Thank you. Jared, could you please read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, municipal corporation of Idaho, annexing and zoning a parcel of land extending the city corporate boundaries east of Interstate 15 and north of East Chubbuck Road, more particularly described as follows. A parcel of land located in the east half of Section 2 and the northwest quarter and south half of Section 1, Township 6, South Range 34 East, and a portion of Government Lot 6 of Section 6. Township 6, South Range 35 East, Boise Meridian, Bannock County, Idaho, with a basis of bearing per City of Pocatello datum, based on the central meridian of the east zone of the Idaho State Plain coordinate system, more particularly described as follows. Commencing at the south quarter corner of said Section 1, Township 6, South Range 34 East, being marked by a three-inch brass cap and survey vault per corner perpetuation, and filing instrument number 800761, said point being the point of beginning. Thence along the southerly line of said Section 1, south 89 degrees 53 minutes 17 seconds west, 2,608.73 feet. To the southwest of corner of said Section 1, monumented with a two-inch aluminum cap per corner perpetuation and filing instrument number 20520365. Thence along the southerly line of said Section 2, north 89 degrees 44 minutes 11 seconds west, 552.28 feet, to the easterly right-of-way of line of Interstate 15, federal aid projects numbers, federal aid projects numbers I-15, I-152171, and I-152print371. Thence along said easterly right-of-way line, the following five courses. One, north 0 degrees 15 minutes 22 seconds east, 25.82 feet. Two, thence north 79 degrees 51 minutes 6 seconds west, 128.34 feet. Three, thence north 54 degrees 36 minutes 2 seconds west, 361.86 feet. Four, thence north 5 degrees 12 minutes 23 seconds west, 954.91 feet. Five, then, thence north 5 degrees 34 minutes 22 seconds east, 1,458.55 feet, to the latitudinal center line of Section 2. Thence along said latitudinal center line, south 89 degrees 45 minutes 55 seconds east, 887.05 feet, to the west quarter corner of Section 1, monumented with a one-inch iron rod instrument number 20520359. Thence along the latitudinal center line of Section 1, south 89 degrees 54 minutes 37 seconds east, 1,971.46 feet. Thence north, 0 degrees 15 minutes 27 seconds east, 150 feet, to the northerly line of the parcel of the land, described in warranty deed instrument number- number twenty-one, seventy-one, fifty, fifty-one. Thence along said northerly line and parallel with the latitudinal center line of said Section One, south eighty-nine degrees, fifty-four minutes, thirty-seven seconds, east six hundred and fifty-six point five-seven feet to the meridional center line of said Section One. Thence along, thence along said section, meridional center line, south, zero degrees, fourteen minutes, three seconds, east one hundred and fifty feet to two-point-five-inch cap per corner perpetuation and filing instrument number twenty-one, sixty-one, seventy-eight, seventy-three, along the latitudinal center line of said Section One and the northerly line of the parcel of land described in warranty deed instrument number twenty-one, seventy-one, fifty, fifty. The following three courses. One, thence south eighty-nine degrees, fifty-four minutes, thirty-seven seconds, east two thousand six hundred and twenty-three point four-eight feet to the east quarter corner of said Section One, monumented with a two-inch aluminum cap per corner perpetuation and filing instrument number ninety-four, zero one, three three one, five. Two, thence along the easterly line of said Section One, south, zero degrees, ten minutes, fifty-seven seconds west, fifty-six point six-one feet to the west quarter corner of Section Six. Township Six, South Range Thirty-five East, monumented by a two-inch aluminum cap per quarter, per corner perpetuation and filing instrument number twenty-one, seventy, seventy-seven, eighteen. Three, thence along the latitudinal center line of said Section Six, south, eighty-nine degrees, forty-seven minutes, thirty-eight seconds, east one thousand, one hundred and fourteen point two-six feet to the west sixteenth corner on the latitudinal center line, thence along the east line of the parcel of land described in warrant deed instrument number twenty-one, seventy-one, fifty, fifty, and the west sixteenth line of said Section Six, south, zero degrees, one minute, eight seconds west, three hundred and sixty-five point one-seven feet. Thence along the southerly line of the parcel of land described in warranty deed instrument number twenty-one, seventy-one, fifty, fifty, the following four courses. Thence south, sixty-three degrees, forty-three minutes, thirty-three seconds west, four hundred and twenty-two point six-two feet. Two, thence south, seventy-six degrees, fifty-one minutes, forty-six seconds west, four hundred and seventy-seven point two-nine feet. Three, thence north, ninety degrees, west two hundred and seventy-two point four-nine feet to said easterly line of towns, of Section One Township Ship Six, South Range Thirty-four East. Four, thence south, seventy-eight degrees, thirty-three minutes, thirty-six seconds west, two thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine point zero-eight feet to said meridional line, center line of Section One. Thence along said meridional center line, south, zero degrees, fourteen minutes, three seconds, east six hundred and eighty-two point two-three feet to the point of non-tangency of a two-thousand, fifty-foot radius curve concave to the southwest of which radius bears south seventy-six degrees, fifty-five minutes, fifty-three seconds west. Thence along the easterly line of the parcel of land described in warranty deed instrument number twenty-one, seventy-one, fifty, fifty-one, Exhibit C. Thence southern, south easterly, two hundred and ninety-nine point six-four feet along said two-thousand, fifty-foot radius curve to the right through the central angle of eight degrees, twenty-two minutes, twenty-nine seconds, and a long cord that bears south eight degrees, fifty-two minutes, fifty-three seconds, east two hundred and ninety-nine point three-eight feet. Thence north, eighty-nine degrees, fifty-four minutes, five seconds, east one hundred and sixty-three point seven feet. Thence parallel with said meridional center line of Section One, south, zero degrees, fourteen minutes, three seconds, east three hundred and ninety-two point four feet to the northerly boundary line of the City of Pocatello limits described in ordinance number nineteen oh six, being the north line of the south, twenty-five feet of the southeast quarter of Section One as described in the said ordinance. Thence along said northerly boundary line of the City of Pocatello, ordinance number nineteen oh six, in parallel with the southerly line of Section One, south, eighty-nine degrees, fifty-four minutes, five seconds west, two hundred and eight point seven-one feet to the meridional center line of Section One. Thence along said meridional center line, south, zero degrees, fourteen minutes, three seconds, east twenty-five feet to the point of beginning. Parcel contains twenty-nine, sorry, parcel contains two hundred and ninety-six point eight-two acres, more or less. Providing for the city clerk to file a certified copy of this ordinance with the Idaho State Tax Commission with Bannock County Auditor, Treasurer, and Assessor in accordance with Idaho Code Fifty-two, Twenty-three, and Sixty-three, Twenty-two, Fifteen. Providing for said land to be zoned commercial general CG covering one hundred and forty-five acres, residential commercial professional RCP covering one hundred eight point two, point five-two acres, residential medium density single-family RMS covering thirty-two point four-zero acres, and residential estate RE covering two acres. And the comprehensive plan map designation as depicted on Exhibit A attached hereto and incorporated herein, and providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law. This rule, the rule requiring that an ordinance be read on three separate occasions having been dispensed with.
Thank you.
Did I mess up?
I think you missed, if you start over again, go through it.
Thank you.
But you love those legal descriptions. I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance, shall the ordinance pass.
Adamson.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Cheatham.
After all that, yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Lurick.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Wow, that was great. All right, Agenda Item Fifteen, Real Covenant Annexation and Annexation Agreement for Northgate Development. Council may wish to approve and authorize the mayor to execute a real covenant and annexation agreement between the City of Pocatello and Town Center JV, Portniv Development LLC, Millennial Development Partners LLC, Robert Hart, and Portniv Health Trust Incorporated, which delineates the terms of the, and conditions for the annexation of approximately two hundred and ninety-six point eight-two acres of land located east of Interstate Fifteen and north of East Chubbuck Road. The conditions include the payment of water acquisition by the developer in an amount to be, to be determined. This land is scheduled to be annexed by city ordinance on February fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Councilman Bray.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve this real covenant and annexation agreement, that we authorize you to execute the real covenant and annexation agreement, and that we should pay attention to all the conditions that are pertinent to this.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Johnston. Johnston? And could you please call the roll?
Bray.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Adamson.
Yes.
Cheatham.
Yes.
Lurick.
Yes.
Thank you, Agenda Item Sixteen, Discussion Items. This time has been set aside to hear discussion items not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. As a reminder, there is a total of three minutes per speaker and fifteen total minutes for this agenda item. So we'll go ahead and get started with Mike Riley, Dr. Mike Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'll be brief because I'm late through my ride, it's probably out front. So, uh, being a fan of the transit system, I don't want to set a bad example. Earlier this week, Marshall was attacked by a loose dog who chased him down Fifth Street, Fifth Street. We were on our way home. As a result of this situation, I'm asking for everyone to help with controlling your As a consequence of him being accosted that way, now I need to take him into additional training, which requires him being distracted tonight, no, I'm kidding, but requires him to go into additional training with dogs in a controlled environment to make sure that he understands that he's not going to be attacked by every dog that he comes in contact with. I have to pay for this myself, I have to research it. That is the direct consequence of having negative contact like this. If this behavior continues, when he can operate within the city without being accosted by loose dogs, he will eventually do as my other dog did and refuse to work and have to be retired. So again, in a nutshell, I'm asking everyone who's got pets, who knows somebody that has pets, to control them and keep them away from service animals because it does not help us work as a team. Uh, I think animal control and the Pocatello Police Department do an excellent job, but it's going to take a community effort to make that happen, and I would ask people to be vigilant and to control their pets because nothing good can come out of interactions like the one Marshall had Monday night. I hate to run, no pun intended, but I need to...
Mike, before you, before you go, I would like, you don't have to go back up, I'd like to also just, just ask people, you know, to keep your stray animals and keep your dogs on a leash and stuff, but also if you approach somebody with a service animal, please do not go to that service animal and start petting it without getting permission from the owner of the animal because that animal is working.
Right. They're, they're, you're absolutely right. Their sense of purpose comes out of the work that they do, and I don't mean to run out, but I want to catch the bus before it pulls away.
Don't blame you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep, have a good night. We'll move on to Nikki Tason.
Nikki Tason, four-nine-six-three Yellowstone. I'm bringing something to the attention of this city. I spent a month in Bannock County Jail over Christmas and New Year's, and I want to discuss what I experienced and what I witnessed there. We do not need a bigger jail or crisis center, we need to deal with what's taking place in that jail by those who run the jail. It was stated that alcohol sales were up six percent, and I would like again for you to think about why that is, what is driving people to increase their alcohol consumption. It's everywhere in this town. You can't go hardly anywhere anymore without alcohol everywhere. In that jail, there are young adult males and females being trafficked for favors. I literally heard an officer ask a new young girl what she could show them, she walked away with extra food. If they don't play the game, there's false probation violations, false warrants, or extended waits for sentencing. There's a girl that's in there since October waiting to be sentenced next March. These are young adults who don't have the support system, who don't know the law, and are at the mercy of these people, and it's other counties involved with Bingham, Caribou, Oneida, Bonneville, not just Bannock County. The cleanliness in some of the situations, I had dried feces on one of the lockdown cells I was in, as well as other food and things like that. In the lockdown cells in the booking area and also the drunk tank, which I was put in as a way of retaliation for addressing these issues. Your onomat on the concrete floor, which your shoes stick to. I witnessed an officer steal a wallet out of an inmate's property bag, as well as food off of inmate trays that were new trays that were extra in case somebody else came into the booking area. There is a loud immoral behavior, some of it forced, some of it not willingly. The access to media on the big screen TV that the taxpayers pay for is absolute evil. Every, from the moment it turned on at five AM till it went off at ten AM, it was violence, satanic, and immoral, and I mean graphic. Nobody wanted to look for wholesome Christmas movies, and these are mainly young adults, young, you know, teenagers to young adults, who are there for drugs, alcohol, abuse, or theft. That was the main criteria that most of them were in there. A lot of them were young parents, over Christmas because of DUIs or drugs while someone else has the children. So we need to be honest. Somebody wants to stop the abuse and the drugs, then let's get rid of the cost. We know where the heroin is produced, in Asia, Africa, India, and the Middle East, being trafficked right here at ISU. Big egg phosphorus and green card holders coming over our border. Alcohol. It's the corporation...
Thank you very much. We'll move on to Frank Roser. Thank you.
In the name of Jesus.
Thank you. Frank?
I have a right to speak. I'm Frank Roser, living three fifty-five, one seven. I'd like to address what I view as inefficiencies in our local government. My father died, one of my brothers has been paying utilities, probably empty and repair and clean his home. He's tired of dealing with it, he wants to go fishing out of state, but, and so we, he called the Water Department and went there, and as I did as well, to have the bill sent to the service address. I'm a native Pocatellan, I've been a Water Department customer for fifty years. I was told that I'd have to pay a hundred and fifty-dollar deposit in order to have that service transfer, the same as some brand-new customer from out of state. There have been no laps in payment or services in the meantime. You know, how many, how many businesses would like to have customers with a fifty-year credit history, and how would they treat you? Another issue concerns a new court enforcement and training supervisor who is intent on enforcing an ex post facto law passed by the council, requiring all trailers and vehicles to be on an improved surface while, just like in Metro California, the large majority of people that move here from out of state do not move here because they miss the old regulation of where areas they leave. They don't want to have dictated where they can park their camp trailer or their boat, their snowmobile trailer, or other vehicles, and they don't want to have it dictated where they can move their garden because it's already covered by something else due to their circumstances having to change. When appraised on the fact that was pushing an ex post facto law, the supervisor replied, "We do it all the time." In a job where tact and communication skills should be required, Gestapo tactics seem to be a ruse. They have no idea of sickness, disability, or age because they never initiate a conversation. However, the letters and pictures are all documented to justify their jobs. In this day of digital voice recorders and body cams, documentation should be easy. This same supervisor has applied for a grant and asked permission to do so to enforce seatbelt laws. This in a state that has been coerced into passing finally a seatbelt law because they threatened to withdraw our federal highway funds. Is that what our constituents want?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kathy McPherson?
I don't know what's appropriate.
Here, why don't you hand it to me if you've got something to... Thank you.
I'm Kathy McPherson, I'm co-owner of Park at RV and Storage along with my husband, David McPherson, located at thirty-seven, seventy, Philbin Road. The last year, we have been plagued with rockchucks. There is a new building development on Kinghorn, about three lots down from us, that when they built their homes, they took out a number of the boulders that were, would have been in their basement areas and placed them between our parking lot that we have for RVs and these homes. And this has become a perfect habitat for rockchucks to breed, and I'm afraid we're going to be overrun again this year. Last year, my husband and I took out over fifty-seven of these particular animals out of our own personal lot, and there were many dozens more that we could see that were just not in our lot currently. They do multiply rapidly. We have gone to the various entities in the city and have asked for help and have been told that we would have to hire a trapper. Currently, we do not know of anybody that has trapping abilities in the City of Pocatello. Boise does have one, I did print out a flyer from their trapper that they have. So I am requesting that perhaps the city could engage in an animal control expert that could help us with eliminating these animals. They are extremely difficult to our business because they crawl inside each of the vehicles. Our neighbor's pump has been decimated twice last year where they have crawled under the building and destroyed the electrical on that. They get up into the engines of a vehicle and will eat all the wiring. They get inside of a building, as been noted earlier in the year when the City Department of Recreation had a rockchuck issue. had a rockchuck issue. I did write a letter earlier regarding this to the City Council, and so I'm just asking once again in person if there's something that the city can do to help us.
Thank you.
Okay.
We will, I will address this, and we've got your contact information, we'll see what happens. Thank you. Okay, thank you. With that, we appreciate the City Council for your work, appreciate our good attorney reading all that stuff for us, that was entertaining. Thank you very much for attending tonight, and with that, we are adjourned.